Also, we're also having city week on the fifteenth of October. We have mayor's award and number three. As a public hearing, consideration of a sale of property locally known as two, locally known as two oh nine South Gunnison Street, Burlington, Iowa, with conditions, Mr. Tisland?
Again, abandoned property that the city acquired. It's located on Gunnison Street between Smith and Division and between Gunnison and Garfield. It is a single-family home. Some of the details on the property is a, a single-family approximately a little over a thousand square feet on the main floor, lots forty-five by one fifty-six. There is off-street parking potential or parking from the alley for potential. There's two bedrooms, one on the main floor and one full bath. It does need a lot of clean-out and work like most of the homes that we acquire. It's in an abandoned condition, so plumbing, electrical needs reviewed and upgraded as needed and windows, doors, floors, walls, essentially rehab project, something that someone would have to rehab substantial completion before we transfer deed, but have had some interest in it, so moving through the council process.
Yeah. Sure. Counsel?
Auction time for you, Mayor.
Yes.
Hopefully, we can get some big money like we did on that last property. Good deal. You guys good?
Sure.
Okay, number four, it's a public hearing, consideration of a sale of property locally known as nine fifteen North Central Avenue, Burlington, Iowa, with conditions, another auction.
Same situation, abandoned property that we acquired. This is on Central Avenue, just north of Spring Street, south of Franklin. Does have alley access off of the back. Again, older home, fifteen hundred square feet on the main floor, two-bedroom on the main floor. There's a large upstairs room that could be used for a bedroom or potentially split into two bedrooms on the upper floor, one full bath, off-street parking from the alley. Does need some roof repairs. There's some leaks in the front and back of the roof, plumbing, electrical, windows, flooring repairs as needed, so another home we hope to be able to get in the hands of someone that'll rehab it and continue it forward.
Eric, can you tell, can you just let the audience know how and where they make their bids on, on properties that are coming up?
They can submit them to the community development department at any time on the first floor of City Hall at four hundred Washington Street. They can come to the council meeting and bid that night as well. We generally try and get bids ahead of time to gauge the interest before bringing it to council. Sometimes people don't want to submit a bid, they just want to come and see how it goes as well, so we do post information on our Facebook page on the development department ahead of time, try and get the word out. We do mail notice everyone within two hundred feet and post it on our city website, too, so. We have additional properties on our city website on the development department page at the bottom. There's a link of lots and buildings available and we don't bring those forward until we get some interest from individuals to council, but there are some on there. I think there's a couple other homes that we just recently acquired and then a handful of lots that we own as well, so.
Good deal. Your name's Apollo School.
I like this program, Eric.
Yeah, it's done very well.
It's really good for our city.
Amen.
I guess one note on that, we have the Iowa chapter of the American Planning Conference. We have a, the conference is here in Burlington in October, October nineteenth to the twenty-first, and there's a session on this and Burlington, myself and city of Newton, as well as another individual with the APA are speaking on this topic. And Burlington's known for this program. I was at a conference in Davenport on historic preservation and they talked about what we did here in Burlington. They went through a condemnation process and cost the city thirty thousand dollars to acquire a home, so it's something that's getting out and getting used and it's been successful in other communities as well, so we've been fortunate to be successful with it as well.
Good. Keep up the good work.
That's right. You guys good?
Yep.
Excellent. Okay, number five, as a public hearing, consideration of an ordinance rezoning the property located at thirty-one oh seven South Fourteenth Street from R-one single-family residential to R-four multifamily residential zoning district with conditions. Mr. Tisland?
This is a lot just north of Kessler Street on the west side of South Fourteenth. It is a part of a, was part of a larger property. There were some barns on the property, silo that have all been demolished. A single-family home went on, on the north lot off of Sioux and they've been looking at redevelopment options for this lot. They've requested rezone to allow for duplex construction on this lot. If you see the lot directly to the east on the opposite side of South Fourteenth Street, it's a three-plex townhouse. And then further along, Kessler, these are all apartment buildings and then there's some duplexes on the Mohawk side, but they've asked to, based on the lot size, rezone to allow duplex condominium construction on this lot. Looking at the lot size, based on R-four, it could allow up to seven units. Didn't, staff in review didn't feel that was appropriate. Based on R-one standards, they could have up to four units, so that's why there's conditions placed on this and went through the process with that. Two conditions of this rezoning would be the land use allows for the property to be used as single-family or two-family duplex dwellings and a maximum of two structures shall be allowed on the lot, four total units maximum. The city planning commission held a hearing on September twentieth regarding the rezoning of the property and they voted five to zero to recommend approval of the request. This is based on the surrounding use of land, which includes single-family, two-family, and multifamily, the conditions of the rezoning that limit the use of land to compatible density to the surrounding, particularly the R-one, and following the future land use map designation as low-density residential, which includes single-family and two-family dwellings. They proposed or looking at similar type of structures on the, just up the road on Fourteenth Street on Pawnee, the condominiums across from Black Hawk Middle or Elementary School, they're looking at constructing two of those on the lot, which would be on the south half of the lot with a shared entrance end, so that's the request. And looking at the conditions, this would limit it to the same density as an R-one standard. R-one requires nine thousand square feet of lot area per family and based on the lot size in R-one, they could have four units. Probably couldn't arrange it based on the layout of the lot, but, so the density is maintained as R-one standards, but it's rezoned to R-four to allow two duplexes on one lot.
Counsel, you guys good?
Basically, the area is not big enough to do like a cul-de-sac type thing.
No, based on the lot width, it's one hundred and fifty feet wide on Fourteenth Street, it would require fifty or sixty feet of right-of-way and that would only leave fifty feet lots on either side, which isn't allowed by code even, so. We looked at rezoning to R-two or R-three, which would allow duplexes as well. They don't allow multiple buildings on one lot and then you'd have an instance of a flag lot where one lot's behind the other and there's no frontage, so this was seen as kind of a compromise. R-four allows multiple buildings on one lot, but then with the conditions, it restricts it back essentially to an R-two district with the R-one standards for lot size, so it's kind of a combination of all the, those districts.
We good?
We were, did, we did walk by there yesterday and the lady that lives right north of there, I asked her how she felt about it. She said, "I liked it when the barn was there."
Really?
That's different, I thought, but I think once she understands the conditions, she's probably going to be okay with this.
Yeah.
You guys good?
Good.
Yes. Okay. Number six. This consideration of an ordinance rezoning the property located at twenty-nine ten Madison Avenue from R-one single-family residential to C-one limited commercial zoning district with a planned unit development, PUD overlay zone. Mr. Tisland?
Met with Cody Ford, applicant, owner of the property, and discussed what he was looking to do with the property a little bit further and brought forward, I guess, restriction on uses based on what he's looking to do with the property is, he's looking to put in hotel motel on the upper floors, restaurant and office on the main floor, commercial offices on the main floor. C-one allows restaurant and offices, but on a smaller size, it limits it, the size to ten thousand square feet of commercial area and it doesn't allow hotel motel, but does allow multifamily, so the PUD essentially is restricting the uses to what he's looking to develop, allowing any type of residential use categories, which includes multifamily. If you were to decide to develop it into apartments, also includes hotel and motel. Commercial office is essentially that. Any type of office use, architects, banks, small clinics would be allowed there and then restaurant. So this, based on the planning commission discussion, they, they wanted to restrict the uses so that it didn't turn into a auto repair bar tavern, something that might not fit with the neighborhood based on the large scale of the building that could have a huge impact and not knowing really what he's developing and you, unfortunately, the applicant wasn't at the planning commission, so he didn't get much input there. He did state he'd be at the council meeting next Monday, so send a reminder on that, but the planning commission did vote five to zero to recommend approval based on limiting the scope through the PUD and the land uses allowed. I guess they realized there's a balance between redevelopment and also what's appropriate for the neighborhood and they felt that this fit that balance of considering the neighborhood impact while also allowing redevelopment options that, those were all, this list was sent to the applicant and he felt that was appropriate for it, so this meets his needs at least at this time and hopefully meets the neighborhood and allows that property to be redeveloped.
Is this somebody local?
I'm not familiar with him. I believe he lives locally. I don't know if he's originally from here.
I don't think so.
But he stated he intends to redevelop the property himself. I don't know his past or his history on that, but.
Thank you.
Any other questions, you guys, on that?
No.
Okay. Number seven is a consideration of an ordinance amending various sections of chapter one fifty-four residential code of the city of Burlington Municipal Code, first reading on that. Mr. Tisland?
So this again, continuation of updating our building codes to the 2015 edition of the international codes. We previously updated the building and international existing building. This is residential code going from the 2012 to the 2015 edition. The only change in this is under one fifty-four point oh two, deleting chapters one twenty-five, or twenty-five, twenty-six, seven, et cetera, taking that out of the code. We want, the residential code is adopted for one and two families. We want to be able to use that for all instances of one and two-family inspections, including plumbing and electrical, so that we're not using our separate code or NAC, which is adopted for commercial and IBC or UPC, the plumbing code, so that we can just use this code, which contains plumbing and electrical in it for all one and two families, so developers can go to one code for this type of development, not have to go through multiple codes, so makes it easier for our inspector having to carry one code for these and also for developers of not having to go back and forth between different codes. Number seven there, it's kept in there, deletes the automatic fire sprinkler systems. The state does delete that as well, so sprinklers aren't required for one and two families, but that's kept in there as well. It's always a question. There are certain requirements based on access roads where it might come into play for one and two families, such as on cul-de-sacs where there's over thirty units or something, but just for typical development on, our, our residential code doesn't require that. It might kick in based on access and fire code requirements.
We good?
This reads, if I'm reading this right, now, if you're going to replace your siding, roofing, et cetera, you don't need a permit then based on?
Yeah, that's under our current standards. There's something in the code, but it's a little different wording, but we, we don't require it unless you're tearing off the complete re-roofing or.
Yeah.
But yeah, for small storage buildings or siding or roofing, we don't require permit, but we can give you sheets on, after so many layers of roofing, you do, you can't continue to add on. There are still requirements, even though we don't require permit, so.
Okay.
Same for window size, there might be egress requirements for size, but we might not require the permit, so we always ask people to check with our inspectors regardless.
That's good. All right, thank you, Eric.
Everybody else good?
Yep.
Right on. Okay, next is a hearing for consideration of an ordinance amending section one fifty-point zero seven, affixing numbers of chapter one fifty building numbering of the city of Burlington Municipal Code. Mr. Tisland?
This came through with the fire department, discussed about the, their numbering program. Looking at the fire code, it read a little differently than our city codes. We wanted to try and make sure our city code matched with the fire code, international fire code stated, and that was a four-inch-high lettering. Currently, our code has said three inches and, and then I don't think it got in the sheet here, but there is another wording, minimum stroke width of zero point five inches. That'll be added for the council meeting, but that matches up with our international fire code instead of having two conflicting codes. We want to make sure they matched, so those changes are all made to fall in line with what our fire code requirements are, so before we, they rolled out that program, we want to make sure everyone was on the same page with that.
You guys good?
Four inches.
Thank you.
Better check mine and see if I have four inches.
And this will be for new numbering. If you have existing lettering, that's three or three and a half inches, you're allowed to continue, but if you're putting up new numbers, we ask that you meet this requirement.
All righty. Number nine, is a motion for preliminary adoption of the second reading of an ordinance, rezoning the property located on the west side of South Main Street between Maple Street and Spruce Street from M-one Light Industrial to C-one Limited Commercial Zoning District.
Can we just go through this?
No changes from the previous reading, other than what we discussed about the, taking out the southern two properties, which there is interest in M-one designation maintaining for those properties. One is for sale and one is used for, I guess, storage of vehicles for the ready-mix company there as well, so those, looking at them and based on talking with the realtor marketing the property, who wanted to maintain that M-one standard, so we will have a amendment at the council meeting to consider is, based on this map up on the screen, it takes out the southern two properties from the rezoning requests, so. But other than that, there's no other changes. Again, kind of brought forward based on the homeless shelter, the transitions DMC, looking at the building at Angular and Main Street and under M-one designation, that use wouldn't be allowed there.
Well, if we're going to amend it, then we probably can't waive the meeting, you think, or can we?
I don't have a problem with it.
I'm fine. Works for me, I'm good.
Took care to prepare to waive the final reading on that, number eight, nine, number nine.
Okay, I'm okay with it, too. I just, you know.
Sounds good, good deal. Thank you, sir. Okay, number ten, resolution approving the final plat of Roy Von subdivision.
This is a minor subdivision, a one-lot subdivision. It's located in the county two-mile area that the city has review on, so it's outside of the city limits. The owner, Myrna Zabidil, is looking to subdivide off home, basically a homestead off the farmland to be able to sell that off, so it's a small one and a half acre subdivision, one-lot subdivision on the property. She owns the large lots down here, both of them, and this would subdivide off this home or the, the home from the rest of the farmland. The city limits currently end on the backside of the homes on Kessler Street up on the north side, just off of Summer Street.
You guys have any, anything you want to add on that?
No, I don't.
Okay. Let's move to the consideration then. Number one consent is the resolution approving final acceptance, final payment and release of retention monies for the two thousand sixteen third and Washington parking deck repair project.
So in.
You're going to let, you're going to let our city manager finally talk?
First time all night.
That's right.
As you'll notice at the end, this, the dollar figure on the final for the parking ramp is significantly higher than the previous scheduled. I think this was before you, earlier, but there was multiple tendons that needed to be repaired and then also there was a beam underneath that was painted, so the total came out to ninety-two thousand. The project, the work has been completed, it got done early last week, so.
Good. How did we pay for this?
Well, we stole from the Sixth and Washington.
Oh, that's right, okay.
Parking lot fund.
Re-appropriated.
We stole.
Probably not great.
Nice catch, huh?
Sorry.
Well, listen, fella.
Pardon my casual tone. We have the money, we re-appropriated.
Everybody wants to get technical.
Sixth and Washington is going to get put off for you?
We have been discussing how we are going to fund paying for that, so it's not forgotten, just reorganization of how we're paying for it.
I don't know if it can be put off any longer.
It really does need to be done.
It's in pretty sad shape.
Anything else, guys? Lady?
No.
All right. Number two is a resolution approving final acceptance, final payment and release of retention monies for the two thousand and fifteen Division Street HMA resurfacing project. City manager?
So this is the Division Street overlay. It's been completed for some time as far as the actual paving. Some of the back and forth with the DOT and the, and the contractor was over deducts, which is the reason why you see a negative value in some of the change orders and the quantity adjustments.
Wow.
Other than that, everything else seems to be okay.
You guys good? Okay. What about number three, resolution endorsing the Mason Road Trail Project? Mr. Tisland?
This is a project we got tap funds for, like, two or three years ago to construct a shared-use path on Mason Road. Those become available in FY eight, federal fiscal year eighteen. We're working with the DOT on it and our resolution, when we applied, stated that the city would maintain or cause to be maintained the trail for ten years. Their requirement is twenty years, so this resolution essentially is to meet their requirements for maintenance, so that the, the last sentence states, "The city agrees to maintain or cause to be maintained the completed pedestrian pathway for a period of twenty years upon completion." But the, the trail exists from the Edstone School going to the west and north up to West Avenue, but again, this is a portion that had been discussed when the school was constructed of trying to get kids to the school safely and we've received funding for a few years now, it's just the timing of those funds take a while to get through the system, so we're hoping to get that going in the next couple of years still. But this resolution is just essentially for that twenty years, stating will maintain or cause to be maintained, whether that's the property owners or the city, the trail for twenty years.
You guys good? Man, I'll tell you, don't.
Too bad we can't get it moved up a year, but that's the way it is.
Resolution approving agreement with Matson, Matson, Moraine Service, Inc., for riverfront lease and mooring agreement.
Yes, this is an existing agreement we have with Matson already. It was a fifteen-year agreement, so the last time it was approved was two thousand and two, so it's probably why some of you have never heard of it, that's why. So this is, we just had Patrick review it, we updated the lease amounts, we increased it the same amount as we've been increasing it in the past. It is, again, could be extended out for the next fifteen years. We have, what was it, three, five-year extensions? So it's been, I ran it by Matson and his staff, they are fine with it, so once you approve it, they'll sign it off to it, too. And this is for the mooring of the barges on the riverfront property that we own, basically, is the locations of these.
It's the where?
The riverfront property that we own, it gives them the right to park their barges, mooring, that's what the mooring is, mooring of the barges, isn't that how you, means parking? Another word for parking?
Yeah.
I don't know why we don't say parking? But that's what this is, so they have the access to that to tie their barges up on our property.
I think if we had the parking sectioned off better on the Mississippi, we wouldn't have these problems, though.
Is that it? The flood problem stuff?
No, nobody else got that one? All right.
Any other questions?
Trying to maintain, anyway. Does this money get designated for some particular project?
It goes to the general fund, so you could say it, it's in where we pay for riverfront activities.
Good deal. You guys good?
Be careful, Riverfront Advisory Committee.
Yeah, I wouldn't start off that way.
We've got two hearings set for October seventeenth. One's consideration of a sale property locally known as two oh seven South Fifth Street with conditions. The other is a consideration of an ordinance creating chapter thirty-eight tree advisory board of liberal Burlington Municipal Code. Excellent. Anything need to be said? Okay. Let's go right into discussion items. Well, why don't I just go ahead and have, do you guys want to go ahead and go on?
I'll start. There's three, I think three members are here today.
Hi, I'm Joanne Bauer, twenty-five, twenty-three, Sunnyside. Almost forgot my address. Today, I'm representing the Riverfront Advisory Committee. It is simply a committee. We do advise the city council concerning the riverfront and sometimes we have trouble communicating, so that's why we ask to appear before you so that we can give you a verbal report on this. Charlie Walsh is president of our committee. Brian Gurley is a member, non-voting member, and I am a member. I've been a member for about five years now. We come to you today to tell you that you own an island, if you didn't know that. Otter Island is owned by the city of Burlington, which makes it under the, what would you call it? What would you call it? You have, you own an island, so you are in control of it, right?
True.
And you, you have to perhaps, you know, regulate it and take care of it. Now, on the island, and I'm going to pass this out to you right now, if you don't mind, we're just going to take a second.
Proprietors. No, wrong word.
I want you to see the island. All right. These, these pictures, passless down. Some of the.
Take one, pass.
Sorry, it's getting so long.
Oh, are we, just one for everybody.
You in there?
Ma'am, can you slow down?
And here's some more. If you don't mind sending with them. Thank you. Here's another one, too. Save it for my.
It's not looking real good, is it?
Now, there's a map in there of the island, if you'll turn to that. There's also a copy of the lease. And what the city does is that they lease out the forty-three, I think it forty-four properties at the rate of two hundred and fifty dollars a year and on the lease agreement, and if you don't live in Des Moines County, it's six hundred dollars a year. So your income from the island is over ten thousand dollars a year, if everybody's paying their leases. Then you also do a timber cut. Then you also do a timber cut on the island, which this year I think is going to produce six-hundred thousand dollars.
Six hundred thousand?
That's what we were told.
The last time we did it, that's what it was.
So it may be higher than that. It may be even close to a million this year. All right, so you've got a nice little gem up there, right? Now, you give these leases out. I don't know how you do that, but if people evidently apply for them when, when a property comes due. If you'll check on number four on the lease agreement, it says the leasing is prohibited from engaging any of the following activities. And then it lists the burning or refusing, raising of livestock, fencing, storing of combustible materials and a storage building which is at least other than properly constructed storage building, which is at least fifty feet from any cabin. The leasing will maintain the cabin and the leased area in a safe, sanitary and orderly condition. And that's why I had these pictures given to you, because you can see of these four properties, those are not in what you would call a safe, sanitary and orderly condition. Now, it's your responsibility as the city to go up there or call these people. We have the names of the leasing and tell them that they must either move on or fix up their cabins. Because if you'll go back to the second page of the lease, under thirteen, "In the event of loss or damage to the cabin or outbuilding equivalent to seventy percent or more of present market value of that structure, such structure may not be rebuilt or replaced unless the city is satisfied that the newer rebuilt structure will meet sound construction standards." Number sixteen, "The city may terminate this agreement with any violation hereby, hereof by the leasing." So you could see that under four different circumstances here, the leasing has, is in violation. And it is your responsibility, or the responsibility of this city, to contact these people and have these properties removed, leased to somebody that will take good care of them. Now, you have forty lovely cabins up there. Beautiful. Well done. Unfortunately, two of those aren't even cabins. Two, maybe two or three. One is a basketball hoop on the property, which doesn't really conform with the lease. The other one is a gazebo, which doesn't really conform with the lease. You also have a mix-up on three of your properties up there, twenty, twenty-one and twenty-two. And all of these are vacant. There's no building on them. There's, they're assigned to the wrong people. So somebody must be in charge and take over the responsibility of this. Now, we have given you these notices several years, but we've never come before you and spoken to you. They've just been written and sent to you. So we would like very much for you to take some action on this property, because you own it. The city owns it. Every citizen in the city that pays taxes owns it. So we would like, since it's a nice piece of property and you're making money off of it, we would like very much for you to follow through and do your duty as far as what you are supposed to do as far as the upkeep. Okay? And with that, I'm going to invite Charlie to come up and talk to you a little bit about the riverfront.
Joanne, just saying, do we know what, what numbers these are?
Yes, I didn't want to put that, I didn't want to put that on the public record, because I think that it's a private situation. I have all of the, there's a, I think that's number twenty-seven or something. I'm not quite sure.
I just wondered what the ones circled meant.
Yeah, the ones I have circled are the ones that are the pictures.
I see twenty, twenty-one and thirty.
We've got some that have marks on. I'll ask you about that. I'll ask you about that.
What kind of marks?
Little pen marks.
Yeah, those are the bad ones.
Okay, okay.
Those are the bad ones, okay.
Yeah. Do you have any questions?
Thank you, Joanne.
All right.
Yes, Charlie Walsh, sixteen nineteen River Street, Burlington. Two things. I'll be very short. Lease on Matson. We're talking about improving that land and would not recommend that you extend it fifteen years. I think that the riverfront is going to be wanting to do something down there. And if you look at the property where they're leasing right now, a lot of people use that for fishing to the north. Also, the blue building down there where we've had numerous contact on, that land in front of that building is say property. Even though the railroad has property there, but the building is owned by a different person. But in front of that building to the river is say land. So the city may be able to do something with that. Second portion would be monies from sale trees. I think we get probably a maximum of ten-thousand dollars a year for riverfront improvements, which are not maintenance, because the monies that you collect from, I'll call it the bed tax, goes for maintenance. Six hundred thousand plus or minus for trees, we get zero. Once again, riverfront improvements. You're going through mitigation on flood. We feel that some of that might, could be used for part of that improvements, which would not be general funds. So. That's it. Any questions?
Okay. Thank you, Charlie.
Thanks, Charlie.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joanne.
Yep. Next, we've got treasurer's report.
Okay, in the packet, again, our two treasurer's report. We're still looking at June thirtieth, and I've been updating the numbers. So we're getting closer. The only thing I'd really point out is general fund right now is about twelve percent of fund balance. So, and then August is also in there. And there's nothing out of the ordinary going on in August. We're just going along like we would expect. So if you guys What?
No surprises.
Nope, no surprises.
Good.
And if you guys have any questions about either one?
I was just gonna ask you Bob's question, if there were any surprises that we didn't know about.
No, nothing out of the ordinary.
You guys good?
Thank you.
Thank you, Nat.
You're welcome.
All right.
Catherine, before, yes, before we go on, maybe you address something that Charlie requested on that, on that lease. Charlie, what, what was your recommendation on the lease? You said not, not a fifteen-year. What's your recommendation on that?
Well, I think it depends on what you're gonna be doing as far as flooding mitigation. You know, I'd tie it to something. We don't have any problem with where they are right now. But if we want to put a path down in front of that, you know, we're gonna be crossing over on their land. And I'm not sure how far the lease designates property. So fifteen years, we could have a lot of changes down there, so.
All right.
You know, I'd say three-year. But maybe that should only be a year. I don't know. We have to bring recommendations to you. And like I said, with all the work you're doing on flooding, I'd hold off. Just maybe do a month-to-month.
Okay, yes, you.
I just like to clarify. I know when I was discussing with Jim how to set the lease terms and how they were in the past, he didn't want to go out for like fifteen years either. So that's why we made it five years, because we know like the flood wall is at least gonna take that long to get built and there's probably not gonna be major changes between now and the next five years. So in five years, we can readjust this. It's just, there is two optional five-year renewals. So if we're rolling around and everything, or moving along and everything's going good and we don't want to change what this lease is about, then it will just automatically renew another five years. But we do have an option, and this is only for really five years. And then an optional two-year, additional five years. Does that make sense? So that, I misspoke. It's really, this is for five years with options. Because I know Jim wanted to make sure we did have options and not it, be able just to go out for fifteen years if we do want to make changes. So he was considerate of that. So, and Matson wanted it, of course, as long as possible. That's his business. He wants it to, you know, to keep it there. So, but that's kind of where we found a middle ground, that let's have it optional. If in five years, we're not ready to do anything with this frontage, just, it'll go another five years. Or at that point, if we want to say, okay, now we want to go year to year, because we're not sure, you know, what we want to do, we can change it at that point. But I know, well, I'm looking at you, flood mitigation, where it's gonna be that far out before we, I think, make any major changes.
It wouldn't be a big deal then if we just eliminated the options and just done a five-year lease so that we know we're clean and we can come back to it and readress it in five years.
I don't think Matson's gonna have, I mean, it's not really what they want, but I don't think they're gonna have an, I mean, what are they gonna do? They're gonna want it as long as possible. So if you want that to be changed, we can.
In any event, it needs to come off the consent agenda and go to the regular agenda.
Yeah, yeah. Just take it off the consent agenda, put it on the regular agenda.
I personally don't have any heartache over a five-year with
I don't either.
with options.
Kathleen will then have it on her schedule, that it will be, you know, four years from now, it'll pop up that it's gonna expire and then we can address it. Then we'll just make sure that this is one that doesn't automatic really renew too. But, or if you want to direct me to change the terms, I can.
I'm fine with it, actually. I am.
I'm, I'm gonna look at it more.
Okay.
We may, I may make a recommendation at the meeting, but
Okay.
I definitely would like to see just, nothing to exceed a five-year at this point, no, no automatic, no optional renewals. We just renegotiate it in five years.
Okay. So I'll leave it as-is.
Okay.
All right.
Yeah, leave it as-is and then we can
Yeah.
Okay.
You good?
I just want to make a statement about the Matson thing.
I just want to make a statement about the Matson. If you are going to lease that property to them again, they need to clean it up. It is an eyesore. I don't know if you've been on the other side on the river going up and down, but it is a mess. And if you are allowing people to lease, this is why I brought you the cabins that are falling down. This is no different. City property. This is our city, and we would like it to look as nice as possible. So you need to put that in the lease agreement that they need to clean their mess up. Okay? Thank you.
That, that was added into this lease that, that there is like that. Unfortunately, where you're talking about, that's not city property. That's their property.
Well, then they should be able to clean it up.
Right, and we have had discussions with that.
Don't lease our property to them if they can't clean up their own property. I mean, that's my feeling.
That would be a council decision, but I know we have talked about that property where he's, where she's referencing that is their frontage. And we talked about if we do go after them, it's more of a nuisance that they have to. But I know Patrick did add that line in here, that if there is I don't know. I forget what, I don't, I only have the one page now, but if there is parcels that need to be cleaned up, that that's, this, it's in this. If it's part of our property, it will be cleaned up according to this lease agreement, so.
We're good. Thank you, Stella. Did you catch the cool walk? Did you catch the cool walk in the man house? I don't know if we got that on camera, Charlie?
Question, she said part of the land they own. I have question with that. I don't think they own any land down there. They might lease land down there, but you own from the sewage treatment plant all the way up past the blue building. Then it goes into ADM and railroad property. So I'm not aware of any land Matson owns on the riverfront in this area. Because Riverfront Committee runs from North Street to South Street. That's our designate area.
I'll have to look into that. Here she comes.
I thought Joanne was referencing where the barges are sinking.
Yeah, hello.
Okay, that's Matson's property, Charlie.
Well, they need to clean up their mess if they
Yeah, that's not on our riverfront.
But they can't own that property, because
So you know where we're up, south of Myers Marina.
Joanne's causing trouble tonight.
The barges, that's south of the railroad bridge. And they own the property on top off Main Street. And that might go all the way down to the riverfront.
That's not what she, where you referenced.
No, that's not what we're talking about.
No. She was talking about north of the Marina, right?
North of Love Harbor.
Oh, that's, that's old. Yeah, that's not, we're not talking about that one.
We're talking about the south. Okay, and there's sunk of barges there?
It's a mess down there.
Okay, we're talking about two different areas.
Of the bridge, south of the bridge?
South of the bridge, there's barges sunk there. And it's been there for decades.
Yeah, it's been there for a long time.
Yeah.
And it's sunk and you can't hardly see it from the shore, because it's covered with trees.
Right.
But it's, it's their property or they own the thing, but they allow it to just
They own land where the old Myers Marina was off of Ninety-Nine. That's certainly up there.
Can we get some, can we get that information on that?
We have, we brought this to, that just gave to Eric with all the pictures.
Okay.
It does sound, I mean, it looks like he has, Ryan has a picture, it looks like, where. So in this lease, though, we did add there is a part in here, so looking at, of course, I can't
We'll find it by next Monday.
Yeah, so we can. Junk equipment and material and debris should be properly removed. That's if it's getting caught up in the mooring barges, but, so. Yeah, I mean, I think we definitely have the right in this lease to, to get them to do that. And I just don't think we've put somebody on that task is the problem.
No, it's been, it's been several years.
Yeah, I thought, sorry, I thought you were talking about north, because that's a mess too.
That's a mess too.
Yeah. Yeah.
They have a mess.
Well, we'll, we'll see what we can get fixed up from our end. We'll, we'll start from there.
Thank you. Thanks, folks.
No doubt. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Bye.
Next, we have the K-nine update.
Thank you.
Who's the smiling gentleman with you?
Smith, Ryan Smith. I've handed you, my name is Major Dennis Kramer, Burlington Police Department, Major of Operations. I was asked to come up here and talk to you a little bit about our K-nine program and where we're at. Initially, I think I was here earlier this spring and talked to you about bringing the K-nine program back to fruition here. And we've had a K-nine, the last one was in two thousand and twelve. With that, we started soliciting funds from just donations and doing different things. And some of you was probably involved in some of our activities with the Boots Versus Badges, which was a fantastic event for
Yes, it was.
for this fundraiser. And it was a good time to get out and enjoy, you know, a good group of people out there. We started back in March of two thousand and sixteen, and I want to talk to you about the steps to establish the K-nine unit there. Because the first, very first thing we talked about was securing funding. And with that securing funding, we started the fundraising efforts back in March. We're now six months into this. Initially, when I started, if you see over to the right there, it's, we had a three-year financial obligation. We thought we could get, if we could get to fifty thousand, four hundred dollars, we would start the program and, and then move forward and be able to raise the additional twenty thousand to fund it for raise the additional twenty thousand to fund it for the next two years, and basically have a five-year program. Most K-9s are in operation somewhere around six years, and we hope in five years that maybe funding with the city would come back around, we'd be able to fund that ourselves with one of our line items. So, getting back to securing the funding, we started in March, just a, kind of a grassroots effort, getting out to the civic organizations, different organizations, we've had people respond very positive to this, as we've had in the past with the Reserve Unit, and I can't, I can't express enough how generous this community is when, when we ask for something to help with our...
No doubt.
Secure in their community, and as a, as a police function, that they're very generous. We have people that come to the front counter and start handing us money, there's an individual that comes religiously, religiously every week, and, and gives a part of her, her salary to a, a community function, and this year she picked this one, and so she comes every week, and, and so, with, with an effort like that, and then we did the, the Boots Versus Badges fundraising, which was a phenomenal event, and I can't thank Cale Heitmeyer, we come up here and presented him with a certificate, which was well deserved, but we've come to a total in six months of sixty-seven, around sixty-seven thousand dollars.
That's unbelievable.
And so, in six months, we've accomplished what we set out to do, you know, to start with fifty thousand four hundred, and we, we was gonna anticipate him going five years and still doing fundraising, so we're almost to our five-year goal.
Wow.
So, with that being said, you know, and, and like I said, this community is, is a great part of that, it's not us doing it, it's the community that came forward and, and really has been generous. So, if you look, number two here is, so, I guess I should say in final, we, I think we're close enough to the funding that we're, we feel pretty comfortable with moving forward with, with this program. So, with the selection here, I wanna talk a little bit about the K-9 handler. Officer Smith standing up here with me, because Officer Smith came to me initially and wanted to start this program again. It wasn't my idea to start again, he came to the chief and I, and, and we talked about it, and I, I kinda put him off a little bit, 'cause I know the funding wasn't in, in the budget, our police department budget, so we did some other, other considerations, and, and he kept digging at us, and so, with the selecting of the handler, I think if, if he comes to me with the idea, I think he's willing to step forward and be the handler for the department and put that effort forward, 'cause he knows what an effort it is to raise this money and, and what we're putting into this program, and how good or how, how much the community believes in this program. So, he's not gonna let the community down.
Did you catch that? Did you catch that?
Sounds like an order.
With that comes his experience, I wanna talk a little bit about, he's an eight, almost nine-year veteran on our department. With that, Officer Smith's also a veteran of the National Guard, and, and holds rank in, in that capacity and has had several deployments, so he knows what it's like to have responsibility and to take responsibility, so with that, I think he's, he's a good fit for that, that, that program. Along with that, he's also a member of our problem-oriented policing unit right now, so his, his, his schedule kinda allows him that flexibility, which will be a great fit for this program also. We, we look at the, also with the selection of the handler, we're gonna, and it says, choose the breed of the dog and purchase the dog, and, and then the training, I wanna talk a little bit about that, we've, he's, he's done some research with different K-9 providers, and we, he feels that at a program out of Langford or Longford, Kansas, I knew I'd mispronounced that, Longford, Kansas, is K-9 Working Dogs International, he feels they're very reputable and has brought that, that kennel to us as where he would like to go to purchase the dog, do his training, and then bring the, the dog back for service. Myself, Chief Beard, and Officer Smith have, have plans to go down to Longford, Kansas, and at least what we wanna do, since it is the community's dollars that have, they've brought forward and, and so graciously have given to us, that we feel like that, you know, we, as a police department or as administrators of the police department, need to go there and make sure that we're getting a good product, and we're not, you know, just haphazardly using the money that they kindly gave to us. So, we're gonna go down to Longford, Kansas, the beginning of October, and, and for lack of a better term, kinda vet that kennel and make sure we're getting what they say we're gonna get for the price we're gonna pay.
That's wise.
Officer Smith then will go, if that, if that does check out, and I, I talked to the guy, and Officer Smith's talked to the guy several times, and so, he's a very upbeat person, and I, I can't, I can't think that anything would go astray, but if it does, we'll look at other avenues. But tentatively, we have Officer Smith set to go there November seventh to receive the two-week training, and he'll get, he'll get an opportunity to train with the dog, learn how to, learn how to work the dog, and make sure that they're compatible together. So, that two-week training will happen, and then while he's there, there's equipment that needs to be installed in one of our squad cars to house the dog when, you know, when he's out on patrol. So, we'll do all that and kinda get an idea of that, and then November seventh, after the training, he brings the dog back. So, hopefully, this dog will be in service by, I'm gonna say by the end of November, around Thanksgiving, and then, once the dog's in service, he will go back additionally in the spring for another week of training to make sure that everything's going great. And there's some, I just need to tell you that there's some warranties with the dog, as we talked about before when we was starting to fundraise for the program, that if the dog ends up not being compatible with him, they stand behind their product. So, and I think that's five years, is that right? Five years. So, that's a significant, I guess, selling point for that program. So, with that, we're at the number seven, which is the implementation, and that's where we're at, so we're checking them off right and left here, so, and I can only say thanks to the community, because without, without their support, none of this is, none of this is gonna happen, we wouldn't have this tool for, for, to bring public safety to this, this town. So, without that, thank you. If you have any questions, myself and Officer Smith would be happy to answer.
When you talked to us in the spring, you said that the dog was trained in German, is that still true, or is it...
That's what, that's what we assume, and I don't know if they train, and that's one of the things that we'll learn when we're down there, if they train in a different language, 'cause some, I know some K-9s are trained in different languages, I don't know, but these dogs are brought directly from Germany, so I could only assume that the easiest thing for them to do would be to train them in German, and then they would respond to commands in German.
Very good. Any other questions?
Nobody has any questions for Officer Smith, how he's gonna make this happen?
I've got a question for Officer Smith. Well, first off, are you busy on October third?
I probably cleared my schedule.
All right, well, I need you down here October third at five-thirty. I, I would, your name came up for a Mayor's Award back when they were doing the Boots and Badges because of your hard work that went into that, and I thought, well, I really don't wanna give a Mayor's Award to Ryan Smith. And that's an inside joke, because I've known you ever since, you were just a, just a little guy, I, I worked with your dad, he taught me the tire business, so we go, we go way back, but just, just to see the, the young man you've grown into, I'm really, really proud of you, I'm glad we got you out of Illinois over into Iowa, taking care of business, but I'm just really proud of you, it's a personal deal with me, and just see your commitment to the community, I'm looking forward to October third, tell your folks, if they don't have anything going, I'd love to see them too, but you make sure you get back here so I can give you that award, I've really been looking forward to it, I, I run my mouth and give you a hard time, but really am proud of you, Ryan.
No, thank you, sir.
Thank you very much, you guys, for all your...
I'll make sure he's up here, Mayor.
I know you will. I know you will.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Very good. All right, next we have the depot update.
Eric will be filling up a calendar here of the tentative schedule, what will happen over the next couple of months. I met with Klingern Associates and Chicken Dance, who's a con, general contractor, after their issue with the window supply, they are set back probably about a month, so they had to order the new windows. If you've noticed on the west side, they've begun the framing work for the windows, and on the east side, most of the windows are in, there's just a small piece that needs to be inserted, and with the weather, everything needs to be buttoned up window-wise before they can begin a lot of the major work inside. So, we'll see how that goes, but it looks like it's gonna be at least a month behind schedule from what was originally updated about a month and a half ago, so.
They do have windows?
Yes, windows are in on the east side and are ordered on the west side.
They're not physically here?
They're not physically here.
Okay. So, i- is it, is it the windows that's sitting, sitting back a month, or is it the windows sitting back and then whatever they're waiting on, but I mean, it's a, it's a total month, or is it just the windows and that could affect something else too?
It's the windows, ultimately.
Okay.
Yeah, the supplier previously went bankrupt, so they had to go and get Bar and Grovers to come in and revamp it, they put it to the top of their list, but ultimately, where they get the windows from doesn't, so it's, that's kinda what's holding us up.
You guys good?
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay. Appointments, you guys have any issue with appointments?
Well, yeah, we have to make a choice. We have two people applying for the same position.
A man and a woman?
And there's, it's even right now.
It's two to two.
Two to.
I, I just, I just wanna throw it out there, personally, I do think a man is needed on that, on that board. I'm just throwing that out there.
My reasoning was gonna be who entered it in first, kinda trying to keep it even still...
Which one? Is this the...
And it would be...
We still have a brother over there.
The man by that standard. I don't know.
Okay, that was eight thirty-one.
Sorry.
I didn't, I didn't consider that anything, you're bringing that up.
You're the one who's fighting with me, but I was gonna flip a coin.
Oh, yeah.
I'm still sticking with what I said, I, I think there's a, a man that's needed on that board. You said you're going with...
Bill Palmer, right?
Yeah.
I haven't decided.
Okay, we'll give you a week on that.
Thank you.
Were you, were you okay with, were you gonna...
Well, we have to have some type of a motion.
Well, we've got, you said you were okay with it, though?
I'm okay with Bill Palmer.
Okay, well, that's, that's three, and Tim's gonna...
So, we'll just leave it that way then.
Okay. Very good. Let's close out, we'll get out of here. Mr. Teslin, nothing? Little Annie?
Nothing here.
Nothing?
Wait, I do have something.
Oh.
This Friday is the Sip Taste and Stroll downtown, there's still time to get tickets, get tickets the day of even, so, let's see, that should be a good time, I like going to those, it only happens twice a year, so, come out to that.
Tim Scott?
That's a good night, Charlie.
The only thing I had was, I don't know if everybody knows this, but Rob Sussman got married, and...
Are we gonna talk about this every week?
I just can't get over it, I just, I don't know how, how he got somebody to marry him, so, I'm not gonna take any more time with this, I'm wrestling with it, I'm wrestling with it, but anyways, I'm just...
You're just mad that you weren't inviting me to...
Get out a piece of cake, Mayor Protiem.
Piece of cake, wow, that sounds good. Do you, are you gonna start talking about HESCO and encourage people not to come down to the riverfront?
Yep.
Yeah, okay. Good.
Mr. Fleming?
We are gonna have to put a HESCO, are we?
Oh, yes.
They're saying nineteen ninety-five, right?
Correct.
So, when do you start that process?
We're gonna start doing, putting up HESCO barriers tomorrow morning, bright and early. One of the big things that will affect people is the parking between the auditorium and port, we're gonna set up some of our materials in the south side parking, it'll be all closed off, but, you know, people that normally park there only have half of a parking lot to park in, so that'll be a, that'll be an adjustment for people.
Yeah.
But we're gonna, nineteen-five is where it's supposed to crest, we're probably going to put up HESCs enough that it'll protect us for the next level in case it increases any. Yeah, please, if you're wondering what's going on down there, try and stay out of the parking lots, guys are running around with forklifts and payloaders and whatnot, and may not see you in there, haste to try and get these up, so it'd just be easier for everyone if you avoid that area for the next couple of days.
Two huge piles of sand already in the...
Yeah. We had sand haulers today. And so, the one event that it does affect is Oktoberfest, it's supposed to be down there this weekend, we've contacted them, letting them know that the, an alternative site, and I believe they found one, but I can't say that a hundred percent.
Anything else?
That's all.
Okay, well, if there's nothing else, just wanna close out.
He survived.
Yeah, he did. He made it through, it wasn't that tough.
I was getting a little nervous, Councilmember Scott.
Just wanna close out by, by again saying, Rob Sussman got married right here in Burlington, anything's possible. Good night, everybody.
Oh, gee.